Chief, would you speak to some pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America and to the republic which stands for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jason, would you be say the prayer tonight? Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done. Please watch over us tonight as we conduct the city's business. Amen.
Well, ma'am.
Thank you, Jason.
Amen.
Gita, roll call.
Counselor Foster.
Go Avs.
Counselor Locke.
Here.
Counselor Lorenz. Mayor Protem Segola.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
A quorum is declared.
Uh modifications to the agenda.
Uh yes, mayor, there is two modifications to the agenda. We need to remove N one and N two.
Kids' connection and Sky High?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What did Stephanie have something on?
Motion to approve the modifications to the agenda.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve modifications to the agenda to remove uh in staff proposal reports and actions, remove kids' connection report and Sky High report. Is there any more discussion? Unida?
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to modify the agenda, removing N one and N two.
All right, thank you. Uh approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting. Feb- uh January?
Twentieth.
Twentieth. And accounts payable. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second to review and approval of that uh consent agenda minutes of regular meeting, January twentieth, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Unida?
Counselor Foster.
Aye.
Counselor Locke.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
All right, proclamation, communications, and appointments.
Mayor and council members, I'd like to call, you need advance up to the front, please.
Woo hoo!
She could go to work for Pastor Foster today. You look beautiful. Unida, I want to congratulate you for serving five years with the city of Montavista as our clerk. Your performance has been fabulous and during the transition meeting here, it's been so much, so helpful, and I'm sure all of those in the past that you have helped and groomed and pushed along has been much appreciated, so congratulations for being part of team.
All right, office.
You're welcome.
One more.
And who gave you the beautiful flowers?
Kathy and Jason.
Sexy eyes.
All right, we'll move to citizen comments and special presentations. Uh citizen comments. City council welcomes unscheduled comments, limit them to three minutes, and the council will not take action at this meeting. Okay, well, we'll go on to scheduled appearances. In order to be on included in the special appearances, you have to be on this portion of the agenda, you fill out the appropriate paperwork from city, the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Our yearly report for Carnegie Public Library, Kathy Lorenz.
So it's come to my attention that we're supposed to do this annually. Since the library is city property and it's leased from the city by the Carnegie Library Board. So try to be better about that and let you know what's going on at the library each year. So I'm gonna go back to when I started at the library and I'll try to make this fast. And not, not take, it's not that many pages, I promise. So I started with the library right before the pandemic, so I started February of twenty twenty. And was just getting going when that all started to happen. And the library closed the end of March of twenty twenty and was closed for six, six weeks. Uh during that time, we did have a staff member in the building each week because people were bringing in their books and dropping them off in the book drop, things like that. So we still had people there, but not, not in a group, not as a group of employees, but, but handling kind of the day-to-day stuff, taking care of the mail, answering email, phone calls, things like that. With that, we were able to take that time, and even after we reopened in May, uh it was, it was very slow. So we used that time to clean the library and we went through room by room, emptied each room, cleaned it, put stuff back, organized it, so the, so in the last two years, the entire library has been cleaned, that's a large facility. Forrest and Rob were very gracious because most of the time our dumpsters were full, and so they'd let us come over and add stuff to the dumpsters out back. I discovered that you can keep more empty cardboard boxes in a library than you can imagine. So that it is cleaned up, it looks real nice. When they did the inspection for the, for SIRSA, uh he was real pleased with the way the library looked and that it was cleaned up and tidy. So that was, that was nice. During the shutdown and aft- well, after, after we reopened in May, we um opened with curbside service and limited services inside the library. Basically, you had to make an appointment to come in and use the computers. In Montavista, being able to come in and copy and print and fax, use the computers to print, that's a service that is needed in our community and lots of people depend on it. And while we were closed, we were also accepting emails and we would print stuff for people and meet them out on the sidewalk and, and hand it to them because people were desperate. And not only that, but stores were shut down, supplies, trucks weren't running, people couldn't get cartridges for their printers and so, you know, there were lots of things that we provide and entertainment, you know, with books and movies and things like that that were definitely needed here in Montavista. As we, books were coming in, we followed all the CDC guidelines that they asked us to do, we quarantined everything for three to five days before it was disinfected and put back on the shelves. Uh the computers were disinfected every time somebody touched them. And that took up a lot of the spare time that we did have, just making sure that all the touch spots were cleaned, that things were taken care of. And to date, to my knowledge, we've not had anything come back to the library as a source of transmission, so we are proud about that. As we went forward, we discovered that we needed to add, add and upgrade some of our computers so we could do social distancing and uh have more people on computers, more spread out. With this, with the pandemic came the whole notion of video conferencing, and that was in high demand. We replaced all the computers in all the meeting rooms and added as, and so that they were newer computers capable of high-speed video conferencing, so that is available. As we cleaned out rooms, the old, we refinished, restored the old me, the old office downstairs in the children's area, which is historic, and it's a beautiful room, and so we've got a video conferencing uh computer in that room that's available for one or two people to use. So it's a small room, but, but it's a real nice, real nice area. The meeting rooms were actually very busy during the summer of twenty twenty because of that. You had professors, college, you know, college professors, teachers, all doing their online classes, if they didn't have high-speed internet at home, they were coming and using the rooms for those, for those options. And at the end of the summer, it had picked up, we had gotten busy, but it was nothing like what we normally had. In October of twenty twenty, uh we replaced all the storm windows on the front side, the, the west side of the old original building. And that was nice because then we could open up all those windows for ventilation, let the breeze blow through, and that was real nice. Why, we maintained all the original woodwork and stuff on the inside of the building. Uh we do plan to continue replacing the storm windows so we're able to open more uh as we go along, doing a few each year. In December of twenty twenty, uh we added five new computers to the computer lab with a donation, a memorial donation, and we replaced the Chrome boxes, which weren't particularly user-friendly or very popular. Most people didn't care to use those. That's when we also replaced one of the, the computers in the small meeting room. In the small meeting room, we have the video conferencing, and we also have security cameras in there. So we are an option for test proctoring for the universities and the schools for kids doing online tests. They can come in uh and in the old days, the professors actually sent us the tests. Then it went to email, and now it's pretty much just done through the browsers. And now there's something the professors are using, it's a lockdown browser. And so when the student logs on to their test site, it actually locks down any browsing capabilities on the computer so they can't be looking at other sites. And with the security cameras, then we can monitor it, make sure there's no cheating on the tests and things like that. In January of twenty twenty-one, Carol Lee Dugan announced her retirement. Uh she had been at the Carnegie Library for twenty-seven years. And so that was, that was a big change that was happening. She restored, when she started, she restored the original Carnegie Library because it was actually slated with the city to be torn down. And so she did the work, raised the grant money to restore the foundation, the building. And then after that, the addition was added uh in two thousand. There was, let's see, I wrote down the cost of the addition, you know, because some council members are new. So the addition was the addition was approximately seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh two hundred thousand dollars, that money was raised locally through donations from, from families and companies, and the rest of it, uh they were able to build the building with grant funds. And during her time as the director, she also was instrumental, her and the board, in building the branch in South Fork, which is one of our branches, it is a Carnegie Library. So it, she has missed every single day, she had twenty-seven years' worth of knowledge that uh that went with her, but she's still, she's still willing to help and answers any questions that, that we have. In March of twenty-one, all the woodwork inside the building was restored and refinished, re-oiled. So that was done along with repairs to the plaster around the window, windows and cracks in the walls. And another donation was made that allowed us to finish upgrading the the newer computers in the library and adding solid-state hard drives, which greatly increased the browsing speed for the patrons. And they were all really happy with that. At the same time, we added a new video conferencing computer in the large meeting room downstairs. The summer, last summer, summer twenty twenty-one, we were much busier than the previous summer. Historically, it was not uncommon to have a hundred people pass through the library in Montavista in one day. And last summer, we were up into the eighties frequently with people in libraries, so we're not quite back to normal, but I suspect that this summer we may, I'm, I'm hoping we're gonna see those hundred numbers again in the library each day. In uh Ju- July of twenty twenty-one, we replaced the old Panasonic telephone system that was probably original to the building. And yeah, not quite that old, but you pick it, you'd say Carnegie Library, and it'd shock you, and it's like, okay, I'm tired of this. And so a new WSB computers installed a new telephone system for us. In October, we start, we replaced the outdoor lighting at the library with LED lights. And I think that has increased especially the safety in the evenings with patrons and the staff leaving in the evenings at eight o'clock. Uh in November, we started the gutter repair. We're having trouble with water uh coming down on the ADA handicap ramp. And so we repaired and replaced the gutters all around both of the buildings. And that has so far, with, so far with the snowfall, that's pretty much eliminated that problem, we don't, we don't see much coming down. Uh in last month, in January, the heating system was inspected and several repairs were needed to the heating system, so those upgrades, those replacements, repair replacements were made, and we're getting nice even heat across, that's a really big building. And we were having cold spots and trouble heating the whole building, and so making those repairs has definitely made it easier to heat and we're able to turn down the main controls so the boilers aren't working quite as much because it's even heat throughout the building. The stepping into Carol Lee's shoes, I can say that maintaining a historic building was not something I ever thought I would be doing, and it is a challenge. And the HVAC sys- HVA system is scary just in and of itself. Especially with the two, you got the old building and the new building merged together. And taking care of that has been challenging. Going forward in March, Creed Repertory Theater is gonna do their first pre-K show for kids. And they've not done that before, it's always been school-age kids, and so they're gonna do two performances at the library. And it's called Ms. Joy, and it's for children who are not in school yet, so that'll be kind of fun, and I'm hoping that the building will be full of kids. And the next, the big upcoming project, um the roof has to be replaced on the library. And that is a two-story building, so that is going to be a big project. I'm anticipating it's gonna be eight, eighty to a hundred thousand dollars to replace the roof on both of those buildings. So we are applying for grants and we do, we've been saving money, we knew that was coming, so we've been setting money aside in a maintenance fund for matching funds for the grants. So that'll be happening this fall or next spring. I was visiting with Gigi, she said stats are always kind of fun, so I, our stat report to the state library isn't due until March, so I haven't started that yet, but I thought I would share with you, I ran a couple of quick reports. In twenty twenty-one, uh we have, the end of twenty twenty-one, we had forty thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine items in our library. And that is not, not all, not all the items in the library are catalogued, so we've actually got more than that, so those are books, movies, CDs, uh catalogs, it, you, it's, we have a lot. We've got a large children's area downstairs. We also have the bound Montavista journals that go back to the early nineteen hundreds. Those are not catalogs, so those are all stored in the archive room downstairs along with the Montavista High School annuals and things like that, that, that are not included in that total. The total patronage right now, library cards that we have for the libraries is twelve thousand, three hundred and eight. So we have, we have a library that is used. Uh we had almost five thousand Wi-Fi touches in twenty twenty-one, so people depend on the library for, for those kind of services. And then I just thought I'd share a little bit of history. The first, uh the libraries in Montavista started, the idea behind the library started in eighteen eighty-five with the Women's Literary Club. And they worked to raise money to build the first library, which is the small stone building next door to the Carnegie Library, which is the historical, one of the historical society buildings. Uh Carnegie donated the money, and the Carnegie Library was completed in nineteen oh nine. Oh, when the Carnegie Library was built, when he was building the libraries, I've got the number here because it's kind of cool. There were eight, he built eighteen one thou- I'm sorry, one thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine public libraries in the United States. Today, there are just over seven hundred of those original library, Carnegie Libraries still being maintained as libraries. So we've lost over half of them that that foundation provided, so I believe that taking care of that building, maintaining our library and going forward is very important for our history and for our future. Any questions? Have I bored you?
A lot of great information, stuff that I didn't even know. You've got an awesome report.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, well, yeah, so we'll probably be doing some fundraisers for the roof this summer, and we talked maybe about having a golf course, doing a tournament at the golf course. Jake Malott offered that up, so there'll be more of that coming, and we want to be sure that we do our part for Stampede and have everything looking really nice for the hundredth anniversary. Anyone else have questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Economic Development, Tom Monaco.
Good evening, uh thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to introduce myself. Uh so I'm Tom Monaco, I am the new Economic Development Executive Director for Upper Rio Grande Economic Development Council. Um and so I want to take a moment to introduce myself, let you know a little bit about me and where we're looking at the future for the economic development uh for the county and for the municipalities within it. So um so I'm obviously taking over from Marty and Bonnie Asplin, who were the previous directors, and obviously have very big shoes to fill there. First off, I'd also like to say thank you because um Montavista has generously provided us office space. So I have an office here in City Hall that I am in two days a week, uh all day on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so that we have a better presence here in the community to be able to better engage with Gigi, the municipal governments here, and the entire Rio Grande area. So I am, I actually have three jobs. I, in addition to being the, the new uh executive director for Urged, uh I am a rural opportunity representative for the Colorado Office of Economic Development and International Trade. So in that role, I, I, I represent all of the divisions of OEDIT to about twenty-one counties through central and southern Colorado. Um and in that, we work with municipalities and county governments on access to grant programs, uh different types of incentivization programs, and so I'm always available if you have any questions about any of the programs that we might have at OEDIT or any of the other government agencies like Department of Local Affairs, things like that, because we work really closely with them. My third job is I am the Special Projects Manager for the Small Business Development Center Network. So I work with all of our fifteen regional SPD C centers across the state with uh different types of projects and grant programs that we have uh through the state program, like we have a new program coming out, it's called Accelerated Growth Program, that came out of the last state, state legislative session, which is a one-point-five million dollar technical assistance program specifically targeted to disproportionately impacted and economically disadvantaged communities, of which the San Luis Valley meets many of those criteria, so we fall into different things like hub zones and enterprise zones and opportunity zones. So there's all these different, uh you know, categorizations that they use to sort of define uh communities that, that are economically distressed or disproportionately impacted by things like, like the pandemic. And so I work with our SPD C centers to facilitate those types of programs. So in my new role with, with Urged, I think we really are hoping to have very good collaboration with all of the municipal governments to really be able to help you achieve your goals. So really, you know, where I'm kind of starting with is identifying what is success for Montavista? What is success for Rio Grande County? You know, and that's really gonna come from you, and then finding ways for us to find mutually agreed upon action items, or even, even what are the barometers for success? That could be, you know, we want the median wage in Montavista to increase three dollars an hour over the next three to five years. Or we want to add twenty jobs. Or we want to focus on specific industry sectors. And a lot of times, you know, you may say, well, what we really want is we want our downtown activated, or we want to see a stronger retail presence. And then what I would say is, well, what will it take for us to achieve that? You know, and I'm really focused on primary economic development, which unfortunately is sort of like the unsexy economic development. It's, it's, it's those primary jobs, it's the things that are gonna allow us to have the great community assets, you know, to have a vibrant downtown, we have to have people of disposable income. We have to have people that have jobs that pay well enough for them to be able to support all the great things that make a community wonderful. And um, you know, so I really am looking at like, what can we do to build that really strong resilient foundation for Montavista? What is it that we're really good at? What are the things that we want to focus on as far as, are there specific types of jobs, is it, is it light manufacturing, is it value-added agriculture, is it food systems? And then how do we focus that to make ourselves as attractive as possible? But not only just attractive, but what can we do for the businesses that we already have? You know, are, you know, is attraction the right methodology? Or do we have the assets here where like, we have businesses that we could grow? You know, it could be as simple as saying, we philosophically don't want anything to leave the valley that we produce, whether that's agricultural, whatever, that's not touched twice. So if we pull something out of the ground, we don't want to stick it in a truck and send it off someplace else. We want to pull it out of the ground, we want to do something to it, bag it, chop it up, process it, whatever that is, and then we send it out of the valley so that we can capture a little bit more of the value-added agriculture that we're, we're kind of missing out on. And that's always, I think, been one of the things with the valley is that we see the, we see the least amount of return on the investment that we put into a lot of the stuff that we do here. You know, so those are the kind of conversations I'd love to have, is say, what does it look like from your perspective as far as where do you want to be in three to five years? Do we have some benchmarks that we can set, um that we can then work towards? Come up with a system and come up with a plan and stay focused as much as we can on that plan. Because I think it's a, there's no quick solution in economic development. It, you have to lay the foundation, you have to build on that foundation, and it takes time. But I think that there are some, I wouldn't say quick wins, but I think there's some things that we can do together that we can say, hey, there are some really good opportunities here that we can build upon, whether those are existing uh manufacturers or businesses here that have opportunity for growth or entrepreneurial ecosystems that we can be building up in the community, whether that's around youth entrepreneurship or um, you know, could be everything from, you know, we talk a lot about like remote work and things like that, it's like, where do we want to play in that field? Is that something that we want to do? How is that gonna impact the, the community? You know, because for a lot of the growth type things that we talk about, there are always those unintended consequences. And you know, you hear people say, well, we don't want to be so lied, or we don't want to be so-and-so. And uh, and I'm like, well, don't worry about that, let's just be the best Montavista we can be. And let's figure out what that is, and figure out what is, what is the ideal scenario for economic success for Montavista, because it may not necessarily be growing our population. It may be, we just want the people that are here to do better, and we want them to have more income, we want to have them more money in their pockets. So is there a method that we can do to help support that? So anyway, I just wanted to, to say that, you know, I really look forward to closely working with you and Gigi and the town to have some accountability to what we do at Urged, to say, it's not enough to be like, oh, we're, you know, we're, we're doing this, like, what, what are the results? What are the expectations, and what are the realistic expectations for us as a community, and what can we do to get there? Because even if we only get to eighty percent of that goal, that's eighty percent better than if we didn't set a goal. And so like I said, it, it's really your direction and your understanding of the community and the things that you want to see, and those could be in some cases, it's the, it's the end result, and that may not be what we're actually trying to do, but that's what we want to have happen because of the things that we do. And so um I'm always available. You know, I want to make sure that I'm very accessible to answer questions if, if individually or as a group, things about economic development or opportunities that might, might be coming our way. things about economic development or opportunities that might, might be coming our way. One thing I'll kind of put out there is we have a program called Rural Jumpstart. And that's a program that we would very much like to see all of the counties in the San Luis Valley taking advantage of, because it's a program for traction of new business and it involves tax incentives. But it's a program that's not really, it's, you know, businesses, there's a lot of non-compete and, and different guardrails. So it's not like we're going to bring a business in that's going to compete with the business that's already here. And it's a program that we won't necessarily use, but the reason we want to do it is because it sends a message. It says, we're open for business, we understand tax incentives, we understand incentivizing businesses. And so even though this program not be, you know, suitable for you, we can have a conversation about other things. And, and along those lines, one of the things I'm working on right now is we're doing an economic study for the entire state. But at the state, we're breaking it down by SPD C region, which the San Luis Valley just happens neatly fit into a region. And we're going to build out an economic, an economic study that I'll be able to share with you. And we're actually, we'll have an online dashboard for this. And so we have a data analyst within our division that came on board this year that I'm working closely with. And the idea is that I want to be able to tell you, this is the regional economy for the San Luis Valley. This is our GDP. This is our median wage. These are our primary industry sectors. And then from that, we can figure out what's the value of a job in Rio Grande County or in Montevista? Because it's, you know, we always hear the thing, you know, a job in rural Colorado is worth twenty jobs in Denver. And there's all these different multipliers, but it's, it's not always particularly accurate because it's not really reflective of the, of the economy that it sits within. So the impact of a job in the San Luis Valley because of the size of the regional economy is going to be very, very different than it's going to be in Durango or even, you know, here versus Alamosa. But for you as a government, to be able to understand where should we be incentivizing businesses, if you don't know what the value of that job is to your economy, it's really hard to figure out what you might want to do to attract that job. Or if it's a dollar of capital formation, you know, what is the value of that dollar of capital formation to the economy over a period of time? It's like, if we invest, the business comes in and they invest half a million dollars and they bring ten jobs over the course of five years, what does that mean with tax revenue, potential with sales tax, with the number of times that dollar might cycle through the economy? You know, we want to be able to measure that. We want to say that there's a value proposition to the investment in those jobs and in that capital formation. So that if somebody says, hey, I want to bring a business, I want to bring it to Montevista. I'm going to bring ten jobs, they're going to pay twenty-five dollars an hour. I want X, Y, and Z from you. I want you to waive tap fees. I want you to give me tax breaks for ten years, whatever that is. You should be able to look at that proposal, run the numbers, and know what that value proposition is and say, yes, we will incentivize that because we know that holistically, the return on that investment for the community is whatever. But if you don't have that data, it's really hard to make those decisions. And so I think we want to try to be that conduit to help you to understand how that might fit into the economy and where it might be worthwhile for us to, to explore those types of incentivizations. And other times you may say, no, it really isn't worth it for us. We really don't see that, you know, the return on that investment is not really worth what you're asking from us. Or it may be that the business doesn't really fit with your strategy for the overall economy for Montevista. You say, you know, we really want to focus on jobs that pay within a certain range. We don't really want to focus on service sector jobs. We want to focus on more high skill, high wage jobs. So this business is coming in, but half the jobs are, are not good jobs, or they're not great jobs. They're not jobs that are going to allow people to buy houses and not jobs that can have a disposable income. They may have very high turnover rates. You know, industry sector jobs like in, in like service sector industries, you know, could be as high as twenty-eight percent as far as people that rotate through those jobs. Not great to build a resilient economy when you don't have that steady committed workforce. And so that's why I hope that we can provide really, you know, some value to you as you try to make some of those decisions and be a partner to answer questions, determine where that direction is so that we can put our energy behind it. Questions? I just threw a lot at you.
A lot of information, very interesting. It's opening up a broad spectrum where like, it's going from the tunnel vision to being able to, and it's like what you said about going to the end and seeing what it'll do coming back. Probably where a lot of us fail of just life in general. We don't want to see what the end is, you know what I mean?
And it's hard. The San Luis Valley economy is a challenging economy. You know, it just kind of rides along. It doesn't have high highs, it doesn't have low lows. But it generally sits lower than, than the state economy. And that's traditionally been the history of the San Luis Valley. And it's, and it's, and it's complex as to why that is. It's not, there's not one reason. It's like a multiple number of factors, some of them historical, some of them cultural, some of them geographic. You know, so to start to move that bar up and try to elevate our economy in a way that's going to be, and I go back to this term resilient, is you want to have that resilient economy. You don't want too many eggs in one basket. You don't want to be beholden to one industry sector because if something happens like a pandemic and you're very tourist-driven, all of a sudden you could be in very difficult situations when your economy suffers from that. But I think when you look at our economy, even during the course of the pandemic, we didn't suffer as much as a lot of the state did. We actually were much more resilient about that. But part of that was because we didn't have as far a fall because our economy isn't as, as expansive. You know, we don't have a, you know, we have a very small population density as far as low population density. And so we don't, you know, we don't feel as impacted by that. And in some cases, we saw improvements in things like sales tax revenue and stuff because of online purchasing. And, you know, and then looking at, you know, primary economic development versus secondary economic development and getting those dollars to come in as opposed to dollars that just kind of slide through. And so again, that's where I'm hoping that we can, you know, we can really be a resource to help you to be able to, to sort of understand where there might be opportunities and also to listen to you and what you're hearing from your community as far as where this, where this city wants to be in three to five years. Because I think that critical is like, economic development that doesn't align with where you want to be as a community is not necessarily a great strategy because sometimes it can go in directions that you didn't intend. You know, those unintended consequences of gentrification and things like that. Could be like, I don't recognize this community anymore, or I literally can't afford to live here anymore. That can be really hard. And it, and it's sometimes like, I didn't, you know, I didn't think far enough down the road to think of what those potential repercussions might be by some of the choices that we make now. And so I'm hoping that we can help strategize with that.
Any more questions?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. It's nice to meet you.
It's nice to meet you too. Thank you.
All right, we will go to resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash three approving an amended budget for calendar year twenty twenty-one.
May I hear council members? This will probably be kind of boring after those great talks. I need to approve an amended budget and appropriation of funds for the calendar year twenty twenty-one to authorize expenditures and revenues for the General Fund, Urban Renewal Authority, and the Capital Project Fund. The City Council of the City of Montevista recognizes the importance of providing year-end budget amendments to accurately state the unaudited financial position of the city year-to-date. And whereas this budget amendment provides assistance in the efficient administration of the city's General Fund, Urban Renewal Authority, and the Capital Project Fund. And whereas the City Council by passage of this resolution acknowledges the city is providing adequate financial controls regarding both revenues and expenditures. And whereas the city will appropriate General Fund donations received to fund the Sky High lease proceeds, annual payment to accurately reflect the revenue received and the expenditures dispersed for the purpose of the Sky High Park. And whereas the city will appropriate grant revenue and income transferred from the General Fund to the Urban Renewal Authority to fund the payoff of the line of credit and utility expenses for urban renewal and transportation exam. And whereas the city will appropriate Capital Project Fund grant donation and lease proceeds revenue to fund Sky High capital outlay issuance costs and street capital outlay expenditures. And now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Montevista, Colorado, that the budget, twenty twenty-one budget and appropriations are hereby amended as follows. And the General Fund donations and contributions want to add two hundred and ten thousand to bring it, the budget to a total of four hundred and eighty. And the U R A grant funds add twenty-one thousand in the budget. And add twenty-four thousand that was transferred from the General Fund to help the U R A cover the payment of the line of credit that was made. State grants in the Capital Project Fund, we need to budget, amend the budget for seven hundred and thirty-five dollars to cover the payments that we received from the DOLA grant on the Sky High project. Donations and contributions need to adjust it to two point eight million. That was originally budgeted, I believe, in the General Fund. And we transferred it at one point and the actual revenue. And now we need to amend the budget to cover that. And then the lease proceeds add five hundred thousand because the original budget was only two million and the total of the lease proceeds was really two point five million. And then we're going to spend it. The debt service, we need to adjust it by two hundred and ten thousand. And that is because of the Outkot Foundation. We were able to double the payment instead of just one payment, we doubled it. The utilities for Adams Street in the U R A and the professional service, well, the utilities was not enough budgeted, so we need to increase that by six hundred and fifty. The professional services for the U R A, there was nothing budgeted. We need to put in the forty thousand dollars. The utilities for the museum was not enough budgeted. And then the Sky High project and the Capital Project Fund for capital outlay, only two million was budgeted and we need to adjust that by three point eight million for a total of five point eight million. The issuance costs of obtaining that lease was forty-six thousand. And then capital outlay for the infrastructure, we need to add eighteen thousand. I would ask the council to approve this request.
Make a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash three, a resolution approving amended budget and appropriations of funds for the calendar year twenty twenty-one to authorize expenditures and revenues for the General Fund, Urban Renewal Authority, and Capital Project Fund.
Second then. I did a second.
Oh, you did. So then you can second it to approve Resolution number two zero two two dash three. Is there any more discussion?
When I ran the math on this, and I may not have read it correctly, it looked like we adjusted more income than we spent. Was that correct or did that even out?
Adjusted, well, it's spread over all the different funds, is that what?
Well, I may not have done my numbers correctly because I was in a hurry when I was looking at that. Is the adjustment numbers of income equaling the adjustment numbers of, of outlay?
No.
Okay, because it looked to me like we adjusted our income more than we adjusted our expenses, which is fine.
Well, some of it, you know, like the, the grant for the, I'm sorry. The grant for the U R A was that, that I'm adjusting that twenty-one thousand was actually a payment request that was requested in two thousand and twenty and it was not received until twenty-one. So there's that revenue sitting there that, you know, is, is not accounted for. The donations of that revenue was like before from the Outkot Foundation to help us pay the lease proceeds. And we paid two payments instead of one because they're wanting to pay it off in five years instead of ten. So that wasn't originally budgeted. So that would have been more revenue. And that, it's pretty much the state grant, the Sky High payments we received from the DOLA grant, that wasn't budgeted at all, and so we needed to get that in there. So the, there is more revenue.
No, that's fine. I, I just, you know, we, we never, we never get upset with having more money than we do expenses. I just wanted to, you know, question whether or not I'd done my math correctly or not.
Any more discussion? You need a?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash three.
We need the amendment of M O U that was signed ten twenty-one twenty-one between Friends of Sky High and City of Montevista.
Yes, so counsel, I am going to change the language on this a little bit. The Friends of Sky High met and they have selected an artist. And the gentleman is out of Durango and have, the city hasn't been a part of it, so it's kind of their deal on what they want to do for the donor wall. And so the donor wall will, will be fifty thousand dollars. And so Carla asks that the funding come from their Outkot dollars that they've set aside here and to absorb that cost. So what I'm proposing is down in the, the third paragraph where it says the Outkot Foundation has discussed loaning Montevista Community Fund up to approximately four hundred thousand dollars for the sole purpose to purchase of conference center furniture, equipment, recreation equipment, kitchen equipment, and donor wall for the new Sky High Regional Event Conference Center. All purchased equipment will be approved by the Friends of Sky High. And then we'll just scratch that next line.
So you're going to make that adjustment, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
When they say loan us, what do you mean?
So this is the, the funding that was set aside early on. And I wasn't part of exactly how all of that came about. But there's the four hundred thousand set aside for these ongoing expense, they're not ongoing, for these initial purchases to take place. And then, as I understand, the Community Fund is kind of keeping that funding. And so as the money is, the, as the items are needing to be purchased, then it's taken out of those funds that have been set aside to in the Community Fund and S L B Federal. And that's where, excuse me, a couple of weeks ago, you all approved the purchase of the furniture came out of these same fundings.
Yeah, but it's still part of the loan. It's getting repaid by the Outkot Foundation.
Correct.
Yeah.
That is correct.
And they want to pay an artist from Durango fifty thousand dollars out of that four hundred. fifty thousand dollars out of that four hundred.
That is correct.
Well, we need a motion to discuss it, so I will make a motion. Uh, move to approve the amendment to the M O U that was signed on ten twenty-one twenty-one between Friends of Sky High and City of Montevista.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendment of M O U that was signed ten twenty-one twenty-one between Friends of Sky High and City of Montevista. Is there any more discussion?
Go for it.
I, I just don't understand why the major outflow of money outside of the valley when we have hundreds of talented artists here in the valley. So I'm not real happy with that, but I don't guess there's anything to be done about it. If that's what they want and that's what they get and I've kind of learned that, you know, they get what they want, so I don't guess I'm gonna die on that hill. But I do, I do find it not valley-supported to do it that way.
I assume that even with this fifty thousand, we are still within the expected amount of expense of that, whatever the, whatever you want to call that fund was.
Yes.
Friends of Sky High pushed this along. We're not in, on the hook for any of this money. It's not ours in the first place, we're just holding it at this point, so.
That's correct.
Anybody else? Yunita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to amend the M O U to add the donor wall.
Receive and approve financial reports, Anita. It's highlighted, I didn't forget. Thank you, Yunita, for highlighting that.
Okay, the, um, summary was in your packet, but I will, uh, I get to tell her next slide, please.
And this is why we keep I T.
We even have it spared just in case.
Well, I'm presenting the, uh, December financial reports. Um, and I want to emphasize that these are unaudited. Um, and, um, I've done a lot of adjusting and, not a lot, but I've done, um, required adjusting entries, but I believe that we will probably have a couple of more to deal with. Um, depreciation, capital assets, maybe some to do with the loans current versus long-term, things like that. But, so, um, just remember that these are the unaudited and it could change, probably will change, be in my first year, whatever. Um, so we've completed a hundred percent of the fiscal year. The cash balance in the main checking account for the general fund is two point one, um, two million one hundred and eighty-three thousand. The water fund is three hundred and eighty-one thousand and the sewer fund is three hundred and fifty-five thousand. Um, the revenue in excess of expenditures in the general fund is six hundred and ninety-one thousand. The water fund has an excess of a hundred and ninety-four thousand. Um, but the sewer fund has a loss of twenty-three thousand. Um, total expenditures, percent of the approved budgeted amount, general fund is a hundred and three percent. Water fund is seventy-eight percent and sewer fund is sixty-seven percent. So, um, this is an example of something that could change based on the, um, resolution that we just did for the budget amendment. You know? Um, so, and then the accounts receivable in the general fund, um, uh, is the three hundred and ninety-five thousand is about eighty-five percent of the total A R. And that, it is, the majority is from, uh, sales tax. The water fund A R consists of utility billing and property tax liens and so does the sewer fund. Um, the water and the sewer account receivable includes year-end adjustment for usage, um, that was not billed, usage in December but was not billed until January. And then in January, that adjustment will be reversed. The accounts payable, um, there was a year, it includes a year-end adjustment of eighty-two thousand and that was for accrued rate wages that were, um, earned in the, in the second half of December but not paid until January. So we have to accrue that in December and that will be reversed in January. Um, in the general fund, that was fifty-seven thousand. Water fund was twelve thousand and sewer fund was twelve thousand.
Next slide. Sorry.
That's okay. Um, so the total revenue comparative, um, is forty-nine percent or two point one million of the total revenue is from sales tax and property tax is ten percent or four hundred and two thousand. So that's kind of interesting where you've got the, the revenue of four point one, almost half of it is, um, from sales tax. Last year, we received one point eight million from sales tax revenue. So we have a fifteen percent increase in sales tax revenue in twenty twenty-one. Overall, um, the revenues saw an ele- eleven percent increase. Total expenditures, general fund year-to-date expenditures increased over last year due in part to the additional debt payment of the Sky High lease purchase agreement. The expenditures saw a thirteen percent increase over twenty twenty. The general fund revenues average about three hundred and forty-seven thousand per month. The average expenditures is about two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. In the, uh, budget comparison, operate, um, we are operating below the approved budget amounts with the exception of buildings, which is, um, just minimal and the Sky High Park, but, um, and that's another thing that will change when I get the, uh, budget amendment entered into the financials. Um, the, uh, what made the buildings over budget was the Valley Three roof that they put in and then naturally, you know, the Sky High debt payment. The current ratio for the end of December is three point six three, three dollars and sixty-three cents of current assets for every one dollar of the current liabilities. And we currently have nine point two seven months of operating expenses in the general fund's total unassigned fund balance. Questions?
How long has it been since we did a rate study for water and sewer? How long has it been since we've done a rate study for water and sewer?
A rate, oh, the rate, um, do you, you do that every year?
No, we did one in two thousand eighteen and we just completed one with the master plans.
Right.
So, um, we need to have that discussion fairly quickly as to where we want to go with our rates.
Because our expenses really didn't change that much.
No, actually, if you look at that second slide, you would see that even though we were, our expenditures exceeded our revenues. If you look at the ground total of expenditures versus allotted budget, we were sixty-seven percent of allotted, adopted budget. So we are actually in the sewer fund spending less in the means knowing that we have this big project coming up and trying to save every penny we can to do it. It's, it's a number of bad things. And you, so, so everybody knows, we run the water and sewer enterprises like a business. People pay for those services and that is the only funding that comes into those is our rates, so.
So if our expenses aren't really changing, if we know they're gonna change and we're still not making money before a change is big, that's a problem. That's something that needs to be addressed.
On your, um, summary sheet, and I think I asked the question before that the reason why Valley Theater was over was because of our budget significantly was because of the roof. But community development also comes in excessively high, fifty-eight thousand dollars or four hundred and something percent of our budget. Um, do we have an answer for that?
That was, um, the community development was the trail they put in over there. Um, that was fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand was for the youth corps that Forrest hired to bring in.
And then is that where the purchase for Prospect went?
Prospect, no, that was water.
No, it's the, um, the piece of lot between by the park shop.
The vacant lot, yes.
I believe that was where the other amount came from.
Okay.
I think the other one over there by Sky High.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for you, Anita. Are you looking, and we're going to, um, be inviting the new representative for the Colorado Trust to come down and talk about investments of city fund and trying to maximize where we can. Are you looking or will you be making a recommendation to council to transfer some of that money into, uh, whether it's short-term or longer-term, eh, investment?
Well, you know, it, it probably is a really good idea to invest some more of that cash. I mean, because we've got, what, um,
Two million.
Four million or something, you know? That gets divvied up, but, and, and then also, um, I do know when we go through the audit process, is it a time for us to discuss w- what, what part of that we might want to, um, assign to certain spending or commit or, you know, so we might want to discuss that about, um, investing some of the money and, and maybe what projects or what we want to do to assign it so it doesn't get absorbed and can we, can we still have it available?
And we've talked about a few things for you guys to, to kind of mull over, but one is in two thousand twenty-six, we have a significant investment that we're gonna have to match for runway rehab out at the airport. And, um, so that's gonna be four hundred thousand dollars, I don't remember.
That's our match.
That's our ma- our match.
It's a nine million dollar project.
It's a project.
So it is a widening and complete rebuild of our runway. So due to the ag planes out there, the sprayers, um, they've been classified as what they classify them from the FAA as B two planes. B two require longer or wider runway. So we have to expand the runway and width by sixty feet for the entire length, estimated project and then our taxiway, we have a forty-five, that's no longer legal with the FAA. So we have to tear that out and rebuild another ninety. So that entire project is what you know about nine point six million in between. We, we pay five percent of that. The federal government pays ninety percent, state aeronautics pays the other five percent and we as the local airport have to pay five. So we're getting a huge amount of money for, unfortunately, it's, it's a big chunk of change for us too.
Yeah.
And you look at the grand scheme of things, it is a large, it's a large budget and it is due in twenty twenty-six.
And the, and then the other project that we hope you guys will give some thought to and that is putting some money back into this building. You know, if you walk around the hallways and things, our carpet is in embarrassing shape. Walls need a really nice coat of paint. Leeside needs new windows, their windows aren't like this. We need to think about a little bit of an investment in our own home right here.
Sounds like we need to have a work session.
Yep, yep.
We haven't had one of those lately.
Uh, the auditor is scheduled to be here, um, in March, I can't remember. Thirteenth or probably Friday, no. Um, he's scheduled to be here in March to go over, so maybe if we, um, have some ideas before then or that, um, we can be thinking of between now and then.
We've gotten some timeframes for a work session.
Thank you, if you don't have any other questions to ask that you approve the financial report.
Make a motion to approve the financial report presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the financial report as read. Is there any more discussion? Yunita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Segola? Mayor Protam?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the financial report.
All right, we'll go to staff proposals, reports and actions. Kristen? I T? I know it's gonna be brief, but we want you to do it anyway, buddy.
Yeah. So I don't have a whole lot to report tonight, back to that whole being brief thing. We've been spending a lot of time out at Sky High, we just had the ag conference. I think that went extremely well from our perspective. We really had to hack together some of the audio on that particular conference. I mean, half our equipment's still over in Germany or in Europe, you know, shipping is just not going on at the moment or not working in our favor is a great way to put it. Other than that though, I mean, we've spent a lot of time over there and the rest of it has been me and our fourth person running around taking care of a lot of day-to-day things and working on some of the bigger projects. I know, uh, now that this particular conference is over, we have a bunch of things planned here like rebuilding the entire Wi-Fi network. We spent all of today working on this, trying to get the mics a little more dialed in so sound is a little bit better. And, uh, we may be seeing some big things coming in the future in regards to this, but, uh, that all's up in the air. Other than that though, I don't have a whole lot to report. So now's a great time for questions or to poke fun, whatever you guys decide.
All I can tell you is I was out at the conference and I heard no complaints and the only thing I heard was somebody said the mics gave them fits.
Oh, yeah, we, we, and Monday was definitely the, uh, the worst day for it. Me and Das actually sat through most of the conferences in the big conference rooms so we could run up and fix a microphone whenever it act up. The equipment that we pushed out is our, I'd say more emergency or, you know, temporary solution in case anything major to happen or if we ever had anything fail in one of these two buildings, they're both cities. It's been on a van for the past year and storage for the past four years before that in boxes brand new, never opened, just sitting out there freezing. So I'm honestly surprised it worked as well as it did. But I, I'm not a huge fan of going in front of people, so the more it worked, the less I had to walk in front of everyone, the better it was.
Well, you guys did a great job.
Well, we appreciate it and, uh, things are getting better, that's for sure.
Thank you. City manager report.
Is it okay if I just stay here or do you guys want me to go to the podium?
I'm fine with you being there.
Okay, thank you. Just to go off of what, um, Christian has said.
Just to go off of what, um, Christian has said. I, I haven't, I don't know the full numbers, but the numbers were somewhere between three hundred and fifty to four hundred people that attended the event. So, they were very excited. I spoke with, um, Mike Hurst this afternoon, he's the president of Del Norte Bank. And he said that they hosted the lunch yesterday and, and they fed three hundred and sixty people. So, it was a nice, big number. And yesterday was when the snow foot fell, so Stephanie will give you a full report next time. In visiting with Linda Burnett from the chamber, they were very, very pleased. And Linda wants to come and, and brag on our, uh, Public Works Department and our stampede or our Sky High staff and what a good job it was. So, I was very positive. Um, I've just got a lot of potpourri of information here. The One Cent Committee has one vacancy. We met yesterday and we only had two people, so they haven't met since November. And I, I see this just mildly problematic if we can't be getting quorums because they want to be a part of making the recommendations of the things that we're doing as they go to you all. So, Anita has sent them an email or a letter saying, do you still want to serve on this committee? And because we're getting ready to advertise for one vacancy and see if we can't get them a little bit more fired up and engaged in participating. If not, I'm not sure how you guys exactly set that up, but maybe we need to make some recommendations that they don't show, if they, they miss so many meetings, they're off and, and, uh, can move forward. And I'll give you one example of this specifically. Rob has been working really hard, we've been, you and I have tag teamed a little bit on a grant that we are submitting called Revitalize Main Street. And, uh, the comment was made that they like to look at and see what these grants are before they're submitted. Well, the timing of this, it's due tomorrow, and so if we can't get a quorum for them to take a look at this and give a thumbs up, we've just gotta keep moving so we don't miss these timelines. This is, I'm really excited about this grant and I don't know if we'll be successful or not, of course, cause they're, they're competitive. The state had twenty-two million, I think, that they were, had in this allocation. They picked Washington Street because it would help us pick, check off all the boxes. It has tri-county seniors, it has the food bank, it has three churches, it has kids connections, it has business, it has the post office, it has residential. And so, the, the, what we've submitted is almost one point four million dollars. We're asking for a million dollars of that. And then we'll use the percentage of the One Cent that comes in for road improvements over the next two years then to meet our match. So, just send good thoughts and see if we can't. My motive is free asphalt, so. But, but Rob, what Rob has put in this, though, is, is improve storm drainage, ADA, curb and gutter, waterline and, um, the asphalt and.
All ADA accessibility all the way down to fourth.
So, we'll see. We also met this week, Rob and I also met this week with, um, the executive director for the Colorado Housing Rural Development Corporation. Arturo Oliverado was in town with another staff. They're the ones that are doing the second phase of Tierra del Sol, consider Tierra del Sol. That's gonna be fifty-two.
Fifty-seven lots.
Fifty-seven lots when it's fully built out. They're hoping between one to five years possibly. So, um, we made the suggestion that in June, when they really begin to break ground, maybe we do a ribbon cutting out there. So, it helps get people maybe excited and they'll apply. Some of it will be self-help housing. It, all of the homes will be based on, on median income. But they're talking about some mixed use, so they're trying to think about, do we put in maybe some condominiums? Maybe, do we do some duplexes? Do they do some spec homes? So, I think that's gonna be really positive for, for our community. One of our last meetings, we talked a little bit about the fines that were being assessed by CDPHG and, um, and how, what project you guys are gonna select that we're gonna have to do as long as CDPHG approves that. And so, we had a, a nice conversation with Christie Dune with the Department of Local Affairs. She raised the concern that since the city borrowed two and a half million dollars and DOLA put in a million dollars to fix what CDPHG is saying that still isn't fixed, that there may be a conflict between the two state agencies because DOLA has invested money that's supposed to take, that's supposed to basically last like for a ten-year project. So, we don't know what'll come of that, but at least she's raised the concern and we'll push her on that to see how that turns out. But in the meantime, making the assumption that it probably will go through, we've reached out to Rio Grande County and asked them for a letter designating Sky High as an emergency shelter. And so, they have done that, they had a meeting this week, they went ahead and got us a letter. And so, we think that that may help, um, our cause if that's what we're gonna do with the generator out there for, for that facility. In visiting with Christie Dune from DOLA again, uh, she recommended that with the first part, the first phase of our ARPA funding, that we look at a planning grant for the design of the wastewater treatment system. So, I think that's what Rob's gonna kinda look towards and we're gonna work with them a little bit more closely on that and get that underway. We did have, we have advertised for the planning commission. It's up online, if you have anybody that's looking for it, they can, they can find it and apply. I did have somebody, I've had a couple of people call just from the article that was in the newspaper here last week about it. So, I think that there will be some, some good interest. This morning, we had a, I went to the, um, Lariat Ditch Annual Meeting. And within that request, there was a letter that was also attached. And the Calvary Baptist Church has one share of water on the Lariat Ditch that they want to sell to the highest bidder. They're asking for sealed bids. We already have five shares on the Lariat Ditch. And I just kinda wanted a little guidance from you guys if you want me to go ahead and call our, our water attorney and see if this is worth, worth our time and Jason's saying no.
No, cause it's not a water right, you're owning shares of the company, so we can't change the water to do it. To do with what we please, we can only irrigate with it. Currently, we're not irrigating with any of our shares, so getting more doesn't do anything for us.
Is there any, um, use for it in irrigating the golf course?
Yes, but that takes infrastructure changes to allow for that. But, yeah, that could be. We both did that in the past, we looked at that a few times.
Like a siphon or something to pump from that?
They, uh, the ditch can be one way, we'd have to have a diversion structure at the golf course and a holding tank to pump out of. They won't let you pump direct out of it.
Water is, huh?
Exactly.
Okay.
But we already have more water within than we use, so we don't need anymore.
Okay, good to know, thank you. Met with, um, Warren Howard out at San Luis Valley Rural Electric. They have, he's expressed again, if there's something that we could use some help on or, or need. They have, um, their employee committee, all of their employees are on, divided up into kinda committees. And they have, they do projects that are helpful for the community. They have to have at least one project for the community and then one within their own little rural electric family. And so, that's, that is where one group of them went and helped with the Kaboom Park out at, um, Sanchez Park, and, um, I said, that's terrific. So, we'll think of some other things that can partner with them on some good things, I hope. And then tomorrow, I'm going to go to a meeting, uh, the San Luis Valley DRG is having an Economic Development 101 class at noon. And so, I'm gonna go down and attend that. And then Saturday, I've been invited to, to give a little presentation to the young farmers and ranchers up in Del Norte. That's part of the Colorado Farm Bureau. Oh, and then I have one more thing. Lacy Mathis and her husband Gavin were in town, those, that is the couple that is, um, has interest in putting the restaurant at one seventeen Adams. And so, they're looking at the facility and, um, Mike has come up with, written up a deed for us. Urban Renewal is having a meeting on Tuesday, so we'll have that looked at and get that signed and get that sent to them. It sounds like the building, and you all probably knew this, but the building needs really extensive overhaul. She said that the roof is caved in, parts of it, and then the back wall needs to be rebuilt and stabilized. And they also wanna be able to move the guy wire that's holding up the utility pole and, um, it's quite a project they're gonna be undertaking if they so choose to complete that. Any questions?
Was there, uh, was it her brother or relative that's the architect or whatever, was he here with them?
No. So, she said they took lots of pictures and lots of measurements and was gonna take those back home to arms. Oh, thank you, Mike. And then we had a, we had a, Rob and, and Mike and I sat in and visited with our two water attorneys and one of their engineers. What's a different company engineer? And got a nice overview thi- this week on where our water is, what the, um, status of the court case is. Just kind of a nice overall, I still don't feel like I know much, so don't ask me any hard questions. But it was good to visit with them, we were on the phone for an hour and a half and.
Very complicated, but they're heading in the right direction and I think they're getting close, from what I could tell, to a resolution of all the objectors. And so, and they're getting progress made on changing some of the irrigation water that we purchased for domestic use. So, they, it was, it's complicated and it's slow and expensive, but it looks like we're making pretty good progress.
Did they make any comments on the accretion issue and whether we get to deal with them later for these?
We should've had Jason, he knows more about it than all of us. But, very complicated and just a lot of issues when you start trying to do that augmentation plan. But it looks like they're making pretty good progress. I expect probably, maybe toward the end of the year, we might resolve a lot of the objectors and resolve things with the division engineers and that sounded promising.
You said that the URI and, and, uh, Mr. Trigell wrote, wrote up a, a deed, was there not an existing deed?
Yeah, there is, but you always have to redo it every time you get a new buyer.
Okay.
And, and there are, when we got the building from Rio Grande Savings, they had some conditions on the purchase. That it had to be used for this and that and, uh, you couldn't just sell it and make money on it, you know? Not that that's gonna be likely, but, um.
Well, maybe after Gavin and Lacy get done with it, they, they can sell it and make some money on it.
But probably you're gonna put enough in there for a while. But, uh, they've got some conditions on it, but they're very flexible with us in terms of the conditions. And, and we did a separate agreement with them because some of those conditions can get bankers trouble. And there's some kinda reverter clause in there that if things go haywire, it can revert back to the bank. So, lenders don't like those kinda clauses, but basically, Rio Grande Savings is very flexible on the conditions. And if, if at the end of three years, things are going good, they're prepared to waive all those conditions, so. But at this point, you sorta have to throw them in there cause that's part of the program. We got the building, uh, or at the time we got the building, that was part of the program, so. But if, if these folks get in and they find that they're having trouble with their lenders or something like that, I think we could get with Sean at the bank and fix it, so.
I appreciate that getting taken care of, I know that's been a, they approved and, and agreed and shook hands in September. And it's February, so I'm thankful, thank you for getting that done.
Any more, Gigi?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll go to county, council committee, city commission, and council reports. And Victor, because you're present right here, you're first.
Um, I don't have a whole lot. I, uh, wanna thank the Public Works for, uh, getting out there and taking care of the, the snow. You know, uh, taking my kids to school in the mornings, you know? Um, I just, I seen them, you know, right there early in the morning, I was like, that's awesome. Um, so, kudos to Public Works. I, uh, I'm appreciative for the weather that we're getting, you know, like, I don't really like driving in it so much, but I'm glad that we're getting it. So, other than that, I really don't have much at all, just thankful for, for, uh, what we do have right now, so.
Thank you, Victor. Martha?
Um, I'm, I'm grateful for, um, well, what I've just said about the URI, getting that taken care of and getting things organized, um. I think things are, are, are moving forward. And, uh, I, even, even in tonight's meeting, I saw some things, noticed some things were, were moving forward. And, and so, that's good, I think there's some things we can still do better, but we will. Other than that, I don't have much, I haven't been out and about to know, I don't even know what's downtown anymore. So, give me a little time and I'll be out and about again and we'll have more to talk about.
Larry?
So, I just wanna brag on a, when you see people doing things well. Couple of weeks ago, I was out shoveling snow in front of the church and, you know, Sunday, uh, Saturday morning, they got somebody running a front end loader moving snow out of the middle of the street. I thought, that's cool, I look over and it's, it's Rob Vance on Saturday morning, running a front end loader. He could've been home in his PJs watching Bugs Bunny, but he was out working and so, tip of the hat, kudos to you, Mr. Vance.
I was still in my PJs.
Oh, okay. And, um, the monthly community supper, Tuesday night at Grace and Mercy Bible Fellowship, that is Tuesday night, five to seven. Everybody is welcome and invited, that's everybody, doesn't matter if you are needy or not, we just want people to come by.
Ms. Sorens?
Well, Stephanie was here, we tell her thanks, but you can pass that along. And IT for all you guys did and for Public Works and everyone who put on a very good ag conference this year. Thank you.
I'd back that one up, watch another. I'd back that one, uh, watching those guys out there, they were busy setting up tables and chairs on the first day and getting stuff done, and Stephanie was cracking a whip, but boy, them guys were just happy to be helping out. And the way they kept the place clean, the snow, and just cleaned up. Vic, as always, top-notch.
He's a good hand.
Very good. And I think he really enjoyed being out there, he was having blasting, seeing people he hadn't seen in years. And very well attended. I know that in the past, because of being the old building, that some of the vendors were starting to be like, yeah, we wanna go, because that old building. And then they got moved to the McMullen Building, and, uh, the comments from vendors that were there this year, I bet we fill her up next year. Because people were missing out. So.
You guys should have joined us Friday night when we were all up there mopping the concrete into the evening, because it still had a lot of cleaning up to do.
Wasn't the sweeper mopper thing still there?
No.
No.
The, the size of that building and everything, it just, we were hand, hand mopping.
You should have called.
You would have answered, but she should have called.
I, I would have been there.
You could have called, I'd, I'd have given you such good words.
Well, you know who you can count on. Outside of that, uh, for me, um, pay attention to your neighbors' places and everything, they're still in, find people that Chief is so eager to meet.
You're doing a good job.
They're still wandering around the streets, um, so surprise your neighbor, scoop some snow. Clean my neighbor's walk that, today, because she was gone, and I didn't know when she was gonna be back. And maybe it looked like she was home, and she's the first one that was like, did you do this? Just keep an eye on your neighbors and keep an eye on everybody. Money strong, it's been, things have been good, and it's one step, one step at a time. He said, build it and they'll come. It's our building of dreams, so here we go. So, with that being said, we will recess this meeting till February seventeenth at six PM.